Filled in for people.
I've, I've, I've made that mistake already. Looking, oh, it's gonna be easy. Hours in, actually, one time last, we had like two things around here. And I take, so I'll be, I'll be home for dinner. And I was like, two, three hours in.
Exactly the right time. It does it exactly the right time. At exactly eighteen thirty, it'll stop.
Another year and then.
Now it's out. Uh-oh.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe they went to put out a full report.
Cause it's time. Yeah, the light went out.
We, we lost them all together now.
What do you want to do? You want to call somebody?
Uh, there you go. We're recording.
I don't know any of these. He said she said.
Game time.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Emo, could you call the roll, please?
Present.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Bargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Zerinski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I need a approval for the minutes of March fifteenth.
Motion to approve by acclamation.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. So moved. Uh, next thing on the agenda is courtesy of the floor. And the first person up on courtesy of four is Mr. Scott Palinkas.
I wanted to go last.
You do want to go last? Okay, we'll alter your, we'll alter your thing. First person, the new first person on the list is Mr. Jay Finnegan.
Well then, I got his email.
Good evening, members of council, uh, Mr. Kraft, members of the administration. As you know, I'm the chairperson of the Northampton County Economic, uh, Gaming and Economic Redevelopment Authority. And I just need some clarification as to how this, uh, is going to play out relative to the proposed disbandment of the, uh, authority. When Attorney Spadoni sent the, a letter and a copy of a proposed resolution yesterday, uh, I expected it to be a resolution and I noticed on the agenda, it's an ordinance. So I guess the mechanism for attempting to disband the authority has gone from a resolution to an ordinance. And then, then it would be my understanding that the ordinance would be introduced tonight and then on the agenda again at the next county council meeting.
Correct.
Is that procedurally correct? Well, other than the fact that, uh, I, I joined with most of the members of the gaming authority in our opposition to that, I will hold our comments to the public hearing that will be held on the ordinance then, two weeks from now.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Next on the list is Graham Simmons.
Good evening, county council. My name is Graham Simmons and I'm the solicitor for the gaming authority. Uh, just want to speak briefly, um, just so that council is aware. The only way that the authority can take any action on the proposed ordinance itself is to hold a board meeting. So I would just ask council to take that into consideration that in terms of asking the authority to do, do anything, the only way it can take action is at a public meeting where the board is present and can take action on the proposed ordinance. But I would also say that, um, it's probably suffice it for me to say, I don't think it's appropriate for me and Mr. Spadoni to debate the merits of the ordinance, uh, here as opposed to in court. But I would just ask council to consider what is happening and where this money is better spent in the meantime. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Tom Nolan.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate, I know some old faces and some new ones, so appreciate it. I too, I've been a founding member of the.
Just state your name for the record, Mr. Nolan.
I'm sorry.
State your name for the record, please.
Sorry, Tom Nolan. Any other information? No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've been a founding member of the gaming authority. I've been serving as their treasurer since its formation. And I also represent Betham Township, uh, as a member of the Board of Commissioners. And so I'm, I'm very knowledgeable about the act. I was involved well before the authority was formed. And so the information that the ordinance has, uh, you know, I revisited it all. And I feel that the, this board needs to do some just research as to what the intent of this is. As a member of the authority and a member of the township, uh, I totally oppose, uh, this ordinance and the resolution. I think the law allows the gaming authority to go through due process and send the necessary information for its proper resolution or dis- dissolution, whatever. So I appreciate your concern and I hope that you take the right posture on this ordinance and, uh, let it go no further.
Are you going to, uh, hold a meeting and, uh, and get a certificate of termination with the board? Is that your plans?
That's up to the gaming authority when we meet.
We are the gaming authority.
We're not finished, we're not finished with our due business.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Next person on the list is Ms. Lori Stoffer, Lower Nazareth.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I am here as the Lower Nazareth Township manager. Um, I will not take your time up with comments, but I do have a letter that I have prepared. It was emailed to all of you at four PM. I'm sure that you probably have not had a chance to retrieve it, so I'm here tonight to provide you with a paper copy. I hope that you read and take into consideration the points that I've made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just take it and pass it down if you want.
Next person on the list is Stephanie Brown.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Brown. I'm a lifelong resident of Lower Stockton Township. The last time I was here, Mr. McClure was sitting over in council and Mr. Stoffer was the executive. I'm here about the Meadows Road Bridge, also known as County Bridge Fifteen. I was alarmed today to get an email from Lower Stockton Township stating it has been closed indefinitely. I know there are some problems with the bridge. The bridge has been an issue for many, many years. But I'm afraid we're steps closer to it being torn down. I know the township has been here. I have been here asking for its preservation. I know it's quite an issue, but I'm looking for an update, some information. I know that within the last many years that I have not been anywhere in the, in the county or township meetings, there was a effort between the township and the county to work out the, the bridge's problems and that has disappeared. And, um, I'm just afraid that this historic bridge built in eighteen fifty-eight is going to disappear. It is the hundred and sixtieth anniversary this year of the bridge. And I'm just befuddled at this point of what has happened between the township and the county trying to preserve this bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, uh, Cory Frank.
Good evening, my name is Cory Frank. And, uh, I'm with the friends of Boots Elementary who have been seeking permanent relocation of the voting away from the school. And I just had two questions tonight, um, for the council. The first, uh, has to do with our extreme disappointment with the Elections Commission. You know, we expected a fair hearing and one member didn't show up for the first meeting in four and a half months. One member acknowledged having never been to the office despite having been confirmed more than a month, uh, prior. One berated members of the public who voiced disappointment that the commission refused to even take a vote, uh, on the permanent relocation of voting away from Boots. And I guess, you know, we're very frustrated that we've cautioned the county council about these candidates by more than just Mr. McClure's hope standard. And we were told that these individuals were exceptionally well qualified. And my question, my first question for the board is, uh, the council rather, is it, do you still find these commissioners and their actions acceptable for Northampton County citizens and their reasonable requests? Okay, and second question.
I know.
Has to do with, uh, Mr. Dietz's resolution in support of HB twenty-one thirty-seven. Uh, first, uh, you know, I want to remind you that at the Election Commission meeting, Ms. Hunter said that that's our part that we need, the legislation in Harrisburg. And so I really want to thank Mr. Dietz for stepping up and, uh, listening to the will of the electorate in that area of, uh, of the county. And, um, you know, I've been asking routinely here for Mr. McClure to make his views on this public because he has claimed repeatedly that he is in support of moving voting away from Boots. And I hope that you'll take the opportunity during your report, sir, and, and lend your support to that initiative today. So then, uh, the second question I have for the board is, will you do your part to protect the children tonight by supporting this resolution for a bill that your own election commission says it needs? And if not, why?
May I say? I, I think you were treated in a most disrespectful manner at the, at the meeting with, by our, by the head of that commission. And I, that was my statement.
I have a question. You're, you, can you tell me what your position is with the school district again?
Well, our position.
No, your position. Oh, you're just a parent.
I, I.
You are a parent.
No, he's friends.
I thought maybe yours.
Uh, Boots Town, Boots Elementary, you're head of Friends of.
Well, I mean, it's not an official organization. It's a group of citizens.
It's just a group of parents.
Have come together, you know, on behalf of this.
All right, listen, this isn't a question and answers thing. Is anything else, sir?
No, I, I hope that we do hear your, your views on this, uh, later today.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person on the list is Crystal Mulata. Hope I said that right. I didn't ruin it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Crystal Mulata, as you all probably remember from the last time I was here. Um, the reason why I'm here tonight is not to debate, you know, what we debated basically last time I was here. Um, but is to simply express my frustration with how, um, one, um, I was treated and Cory Frank was treated the last time we were here by Mr. Kraft. And, um, two, how we were treated at the Election Board Commission. And I, you know, thank you, thank you for acknowledging how, um, the behavior that was, uh, going on that, that evening was really not acceptable. Um, considering we had children in the room and this is supposed to be an environment that is supposed to be, um, authority figures representing our county and, you know, that unfortunately that night did not exactly happen with one of the people, not, not speaking for all of them. But, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, staff and parents were very upset about how that meeting had pursued. Um, and I felt coming here tonight and just expressing my, you know, concerns about that and letting you guys know how all of that, you know, erupted and hopefully that in the future, something could happen to where it would be in a more calm manner. And, you know, definitely with children in the room that we can be more understanding and, you know, go forward with a, you know, better evening. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The last person on the list is Mr. Scott Palinkas.
Good evening. My name's Scott Palinkas. I'm with Wilsonborough Council. I am a councilman for them and, um, you had brought up at the other meeting earlier about Dixie. I just wanted to let you guys know that we are bringing Mr. Redmond in on a regular basis. He was fined two weeks ago for certain things that are going on in the warehouse. And in the future, if you have any questions about what's going on moving forward with Dixie, you can contact us too. Cause we're trying to get him to move, to clean up the property or figure out what he's going to do with the property. So that's one. And two, I'm working with West Easton currently on, uh, rails and trails. And we're trying to put in the bike path to the Third Street Junction down along the, uh, rail section coming into where your day's end was. And the, um, I guess there's a, uh, strip mall down there. Um, we're working with West Easton. We have a, uh, study going in right now. A grant, a grant study for the trestles that lead over Iron Street and over the Main Street that goes down into West Easton. When that comes back, we're going to be trying to finish up that portion of Wilson into West Easton and then connecting with Easton. And in the future data, I'll come in and see if we can get Easton to work with us to help finish this up down on their section. I know this was a project that you guys had done a few years ago and something happened where it fell through at West Easton. But at this point, I just wanted to come in and let you guys know that we're, we're moving forward with it at a local level on our level to try to get that connected down to Easton from there.
Thank you.
All right? Good day.
Peg.
May I speak under courtesy of the floor without going down to the floor like Mr. Angle used to do?
I'd rather see you there though, but go ahead.
I can take my little notes with me. I'm just speaking to this gaming ordinance and in my opinion, this ordinance is flawed. The money is to be dispersed by the authority. That's how the rules were made by the state. And then the authority dissolves. It is not appropriate for the county to take money, give it to D C E D to disperse or any other department to disperse or use. I think we have to exercise some patience and I hope you think about this over the next two weeks until we meet again. And I hope we exercise some patience, allow the authority to do their job. Maybe they need a timeframe, but the dollars are gone, we dissolve the authority. But it's up to the authority to give the money to these municipalities.
Thank you, Peg. Anybody else?
And I also want to go on record for Brian Harris from Bushkill Township who said that they, that they, um, disapprove of this ordinance too.
Okay, thank you. Do you want courtesy of the floor also?
I have yours.
This is completely separate issue for the gentleman from Wilsonborough. I would urge you to have your township manager meet with the Director of Administration and Brian cope, uh, in order to discuss your rail trail issue. Cause, uh, Brian has done a terrific job working with the municipalities, uh, to facilitate that process. And, uh, hopefully, uh, he'll be able to, uh, get you guys headed in the right direction. Cause, uh, just last year, we had a rail trail in North Hampton Borough that was completed that had been on the books for almost thirty years. Hopefully it won't take that long for you to get yours completed. And I urge you to set up a meeting with Brian, uh, through the Department of Administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishes to address council courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one. Confirmation of appointments is next on the agenda. Uh, Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated thereafter. Airport Authority. Tara Zerinski, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Children Youth Family Advisory Board, C. David Howe, term to expire May first of two thousand twenty. Greystale Advisory Board, Lou Anne Vogel, term to expire April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Citizen Representative, Jamie Horvath, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And the Revenue Appeals Board, Robert Scott, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And I was just wondering if any of these folks are here tonight?
It's your hand.
I, I'm here.
Okay, all right. And this was discussed at last night's economic development meeting and all of the, um.
Personnel.
All, I'm sorry, the, at the personnel meeting and all of them were, um, unanimously passed for, to move for tonight's, uh, meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Is there, uh, any discussion on these, uh, pegs?
Lori's having trouble with me. Anyway, I just, I just have a question for, for Ms. Zerinski because of the Airport Authority and Bradens. Are you fully in support of Bradens and are you going to do everything you can to motivate them, to get them moving on Bradens? We've been fighting this battle for so many years. And now that they are supposedly flush with money, as I've heard, I don't know if they are or they aren't. But, uh, I hope we get some action over Bradens. Would you fully support that?
I think it's an issue that had been only recently brought to my attention. I would like to delve into it a little bit more before I take a, a firm position on it. I think that's fair enough, you know, and, um.
I want to vote for you.
I'm not going to pander for your vote. You know, that's not what I do.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? I'm going to look at all sides of a, of an issue before I decide to take a stand on it. But that is, that's what I do. If I find out that that's what should be done, then that's what I'm going to do.
We had a terrible go around a few years ago to try and save it.
All right.
I hear you.
Okay, so we'll move on.
You know what? And I, I'm open to discussion, to your discussion, and I'd like to hear more about it. And that is generally how I operate.
Read the articles and get the background.
All right, is there any other discussion in any of the other nominees or Ms. Zerinski? Mr. Dietz? I didn't see him.
Yeah, I guess, um, I'd like to ask you your opinion on the airports and, and concerns and, and about what's happened in the past and, and what your vision or, or thought going forward with the airport is.
I think that some of, I've, I've only been to one meeting, you know, and I'll admit that. But what my concern at that meeting was, was that they had land that they were going to delegate towards different things. And I want to make sure that it's all responsible. I want to make sure that the airport functions responsibly, that we make sure that it functions at its highest level. And I think that I can make responsible choices and decisions on that board.
I, I do request, i- if we could separate at least Tara's out from, from the rest of.
That's fine. That's fine. Any other questions, Bob?
I'm sorry, I just, I just want to, you know, under full disclosure, so I'm going to vote against it. That, that airport's been my life since graduating high school from working line service to being a, a tenant there and flying out of there. And, and full disclosure is, I, I did ask for, for an, an appointment onto it and I don't want it to appear a, as sour grapes. But I've been on that, you know, as a tenant at the airport, worked at that airport. When, when the board, you know, didn't hold the, the, uh, didn't have, in my opinion, much knowledge on aviation and, and business. And they really went downhill and as a tenant there, you know, when it went downhill, the, the service we got wa- was down. Things are coming around. I think it's had a, a lot of board members that have aviation background, business background. And I, while it's going in the right direction, I, I'd like to see someone that, that has that, that, and I'm not saying myself, but anyone, there, there's a few other nominees I could think of that had that background and like to see it keep going in the right direction, so.
I hear you.
Well, you know, I did appoint you as council liaison to the airport because of your credentials and background. So you are on the Airport Authority. Is there any, pardon me?
No, no. And, and, and except in my opinion, you know, there's a lot of people that serve on, on the board is also, there's General Aviation Advisory Council. It has about ten members on there and residents or, or people that attend every meeting, that I think are up to speed and, and ready to hold the Airport Authority Administration accountable from day one.
But as, as a council, you know, from county council finances and supports the airport, you have a lot of weight even though you don't have a vote. Can exercise your will, people. Let them know how you feel about what they're doing. That's why you're the council liaison there.
I know.
May I be recognized? I guess.
Like I was used to the old time too where it was give and take. It was informal.
Okay.
You have to win or turn.
We'll behave.
Where's, where's the, the guy when you move?
Yeah.
Anyway, um, I agree with Mr. Dietz actually on some, perhaps that I think that it would be good to have people on the authority who have knowledge of your pilot, much pilot, and, you know, you, that would be good. You know, the thing about Tara though that I like is, I had recognized years ago, the Airport Authority almost seemed like it was a conduit for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, I was wondering like unless you were, unless you were part of this inner circle, uh, sanctum, I mean, we had to do all the guests them once because they had closed meetings, I think.
Right.
You remember that?
Oh, my gosh.
And, and lobster lunches or whatever the heck was going on over there.
It was incredible.
So I mean, you know, it was really, you didn't know who was blogging who, Shale Dog.
Mm-hmm. The Renintus.
Let me, let me make my plug for Tara. That being said, I am glad that Ms. Zerinski, a, a citizen, is, is being, uh, put forward and not somebody who somehow is beholden to some of the corporate gods of the Lehigh Valley. And I think that's a good thing because the airport is many things. It's not just an arm of the economic development of, of the county. It's a lot of things. And also, um, I don't know if Mr. Kuzic is still concerned about her blogging activities, but if he is, he should, he should ask you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, uh, since we're separating these, are there any other questions for Ms. Zerinski and her appointment to the Airport Authority?
Yes, what, what is an eco-feminist blogger?
I worked at one point in time as I was a professor, uh, an adjunct professor of philosophy at Northampton Community College. I worked for shalereporter.com as an eco-feminist blogger, which eco-feminism.
Talk into your mic from my old ears.
All right. So eco-feminism examines the intersection of feminist rhetoric and also environmentalism. So that's the best way that I could explain it. And so I wrote a lot about fracking and the environment and pipelines. So you can go and look up shalereporter.com and From the Ground Up and you can see some of my past, uh, writing. And I think you would enjoy it.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Zerinski? Uh, can we call for the vote?
Anything. What's your sign?
Just for, just for the Airport Authority, just for Ms. Zerinski, cause they wanted to take it out.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Wait, stop. Who, what are we voting on? I'm not clear. Just Tara?
Just me.
Okay. Thank you.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
Mrs. Ferrara?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Bargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Ms. Zerinski?
I abstain.
Passed by a vote of six to two with one exception.
Any other discussion or any of the other, uh, appointments to boards or authorities? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Bargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is County Executive's Report. Mr. McClure?
Good evening. First on our agenda, we need a, and, uh, I'll let council decide, uh, which committees of jurisdiction, uh, would be appropriate to do this. I think maybe Public Works. We need a, a comprehensive review of where the county is vis-à-vis the General Purpose Authority and Krieger with the P-three project. There are, um, numerous challenges, um, that we are facing moving forward with the project. And although I, I think it's probably fair, fairly clear from my public comments in the past, I would not have in a million years done this. It's now my responsibility to make sure the challenges are overcome and that the project gets completed. I need your help to do that though. And let me just, to give you one example. Krieger, uh, was responsible under the contract for obtaining temporary easements. Move the equipment in, get the site work done. And in the contract, the county is responsible for obtaining the permanent easements because we'll, we'll need to purchase easements from landowners to make the changes that are called for with the bridges. Krieger had at one point agreed orally to take over, uh, obtaining the permanent easements as well. They have now concluded that, uh, it's too much work to do and would like to revert to the terms of the contract, which is the county needs to get the easements. Unfortunately, that money isn't in the budget. So we'll need to find the money to obtain the easements within the budget. We think we can do that, but this is just one of the myriad of challenges that we're facing with the project that I think council needs to, I, I could stand here all night and talk to you about them actually. But I think council, we should have a, a committee meeting or committee meetings to go over that so that we don't waste, uh, too much. It's not waste time, that we don't take up too much of your time tonight with that. Mr. Emili is here. I would like him to talk a little bit about Meadows because that bridge is on, uh, the, uh, it is on the P-three. It's not, it's not one of those that's scheduled to, yeah, it's, there's a couple of problems with it. One, it's originally scheduled to be a rehab.
Twenty-twenty.
And not a replacement. It, we'll hear from Mr. Emili who's an engineer and a bridge guy, uh, if he'll, if he'll come up and talk about that. We also have talked about very preliminarily the potential for it to be salvaged, but that's another, uh, conversation. If you come up and just give us an overview of what happened and where we're at.
Sure. Uh, the county was notified this morning by a bridge inspector, uh, that there were, that he was conducting a routine inspection of the bridge. Uh, he found significant, uh, well, a crack in the void that he deemed to be, uh, fairly substantial. Uh, he notified the county's bridge superintendent and we reacted quickly to close the bridge. Um, we have temporary barriers and barrels in place, uh, as of now. And we are working towards procuring the, uh, necessary detour signage at this point. Uh, as exec, as executive.
As Executive McClure had alluded to, this was one of the thirty-three bridges that was included on the P3. It was scheduled to be a rehabilitation. Given today's developments, we are going to be evaluating whether or not a rehabilitation is feasible, and we've been coordinating with both the GPA as well as Krieger to determine what our next course of action would be. At this point, we are waiting for the full inspection report to be released, and at that point, we'll be able to make an informed decision.
Thanks. Next on my list is, very quickly, 911. As council knows, the state has required that the counties, County of Northampton, Lehigh County take over Bethlehem and Allentown's 911 systems. That process is being overseen by Director of Administration, Mr. Dertenger, along with Mr. Weaver, our Director of Emergency Management and 911. That process is difficult. There are many issues that Bethlehem would like to have addressed in the, in the process, including labor issues that are, that are not easy to iron out. Fortunately, Mr. Dertenger has become directly involved in meetings, and it seems to me that while we're going to make the transition, Bethlehem may need a little support in terms of logistics and people power on the way to doing that. So, we're on track, and I believe that's, it's correct to say we're on track, and we will meet the state guidelines. The other thing I would say, this is state mandate and it's almost entirely funded, maybe not completely, but almost entirely funded, and that's good for us going forward. We thought we were out of snow overtime.
We were wrong.
Because, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's been a lot of snow. Our folks in parks have done a tremendous job keeping the campuses and our facilities cleared, and we found the money, we believe we found the money within the Public Works budget to cover the snow overtime, but it, on the face of it, it has been used up. Article thirteen of the administrative code, Article thirteen has been a subject of difficulty between the executive branch and council for many, many years, probably since Article thirteen was originally written. I am pleased to say that Mr. Barron, along with Ms. Anderson and Mr. Biedelmann have, and others from fiscal, have undertaken a substantial revision of Article thirteen, such that, and they'll be presenting it to you at finance in the very near future, such that many of the points of contention between council and administration and issues of difficulty in procurement, we believe are going to be cleared up. And why this is important is, I believe, it's my view, that Article thirteen is really the cause of much of the talk about the necessity for a revision of the Home Rule Charter. There are some issues that ultimately need to be resolved by court, but I believe that the changes within Article thirteen will probably be able to keep us out of court for the foreseeable future, and I look forward to Mr. Barron and company presenting that to you. Mr. Dietz has a resolution on the agenda tonight regarding the voting at Bush Gill Elementary. I remain committed to the common sense solution of moving voting out of that school. I will say also, I am embarrassed of how that meeting was conducted. It's, as you know, an article of governmental faith of mine, that all public meetings should be conducted with civility, even under trying circumstances, and I sat here many times in that, in that seat, some of you remember, under trying circumstances, and I always tried to maintain our civility, and I apologize to, I apologize to those parents and their kids who were offended, and I'm sorry that happened. With respect to Mr. Dietz's proposal, the ordinance, with respect to having certain bonding go out to the public for a vote, I oppose that measure. I do so because we have had reflection from the non-profit, not-for-profit community, St. Luke's, for example, that fears that this will interfere with their ability to quickly go to market to do their expansion. We have those similar fears, so we oppose that, and if it's passed, it's in form of an ordinance, I believe, I will not sign it. Sludge, I don't know if any of you have been paying attention to the news about sludge. We have very little ability at the county level to combat what I believe is a growing public health problem. However, I have ordered parks to determine whether or not we are using any biosolids on any of our properties, and some of these can have very friendly sounding names. So I've asked them to take a closer look at the stuff we're using in terms of fertilizer to see whether we're using these biosolids, and if we are, we're going to discontinue doing it. That's something I think I can do without, an administrative step I can take without any, any other action. Also, we are attempting to create a voluntary procedure, voluntary, in our farmland preservation program, where we ask nicely the farmers coming into the program to maybe check a box, to say they voluntarily won't spread it. There will be no penalty if they do, if they don't check the box, they still get into the program, but we, and this is, this is not because I'm weak on sludge, I would absolutely require it if I could, but state law is currently in a place where you can't require them not to use it. That's the bottom line on that. So we're gonna ask nicely, hopefully, eventually, and maybe we can get some cooperation in that regard. My understanding is that of all, all of the farms that are in our program, only six use it. So that's good, because we have many more farms in our program than that, and we hope to have that number dwindle over time. Yesterday, the Transportation Improvement Project Fund was announced, and I have to say, I am very disappointed. Lehigh County is slated, over the next four years, to have 2.5 times more money spent on its transportation projects than is Northampton County. Now, those of us who have been around for a long time are not unfamiliar with Northampton County being on the short end of the regional stick, right? I mean, we're all, we're all for regionalism, we're about, we're about by-county cooperation, that is a fact, but generally speaking, if we pay fifty percent of the bill, we get forty-two percent of the services. And you have a county executive, at least for another couple of years, who is going to be talking about that a lot and taking some action. Now, we have representatives of municipalities here tonight, and what, I complained already, in case you were wondering, I've already complained to the planning commission about this disparity in funding, and their response was, well, your municipalities didn't bring enough projects to us so that the funding could be more equanimous, so we're gonna have a COG meeting soon where we'll be talking about that. I'm wondering if that is in fact the case, we'll find out, and we'll be encouraging our municipalities to apply to the tip, because I want to see them get that, I want to see our municipalities applying for transportation grants I'm told by LVPC they'll get if they apply for them. So we'll work on that going forward. Good news, he begged me not to tell you this, but Mr. Dertenger's been involved with the generator project at Greysdale, along with Mr. Parsons and Mr. Emili, and we are told that we're shooting for August, to have the generator project finally completed.
What year is it?
But this year, this year. So, well, it'll be, for me, it'll only be six months, so you won't be able to hang that on me.
Really?
And finally, the gaming authority, it's, we'll talk more about it in two weeks, I'm sure, but some of you know, Mr. Kuzic was here and did the gaming, we did the language together, and if he remembers, and remembers correctly, he'll recall I was the lead author, that I initially wrote the language authorizing the gaming authority to mirror what the state statute was, which was to benefit the contiguous municipalities who could demonstrate impact and the city of Bethlehem. And I believe my original proposal for the authority was six members, the contiguous municipalities in Bethlehem, and for reasons of being able to count to five, the rule of five, no, it was, it was a compromise, we did that around here, by the way, we compromised to get it done, because Erie County had its, had its council be its gaming authority, and that didn't work out so well for them. So we thought that an authority was a much better approach, so we created it, and we created the number of seats that it has, I don't know if it's nine, yeah, that was a compromise. It diluted the, what I thought was the intent of the state statute. I thought that had one of the contiguous municipalities actually filed a lawsuit, the gaming authority might have been found to be defective because it included representatives not of the contiguous municipalities in Bethlehem, but fortunately, no one ever did that. We were very fortunate in that regard. But gaming authority's time has come and gone. The state, for reasons only it knows, has decided to take the slots funds, and now you'll have to go to your state senator to, I suspect, to help you obtain your funds from Commonwealth financing. And what I really hope the municipalities will do is do that, whatever that grant process turns out to be, they'll go and they'll apply for those funds, I hope they get more money than they got when they were constituted as a gaming authority, and if our Department of Community and Economic Development can help them in any way doing that, we will. If they need our help in the grant process, we'll help them with that. With that said, it's, I brought the gaming authority into the world, it's time to take it out. It is, the state has, the state has told us, it's now obviated, and the state has also empowered us to keep whatever is not committed, whatever funds are not committed. And, you know, this is not a, this is not a mere money grab to fill a budgetary gap that a million, two thousand, a million, two hundred thousand dollars wouldn't fill any gap we have, but there are ways to use that money that are consistent with the spirit of how the gaming authority is operated. For example, in the Department of Community and Economic Development, a position which is currently held by Ms. Collis, that position is funded from gaming authority revenue. Well, we won't have any more gaming authority revenue, because we don't get it anymore. So we could use that money to help keep that position, which is vital in the Department of Community and Economic Development staff, going forward. That position costs us about seventy thousand dollars a year, so you can see that we could use that money up fairly quickly in, in terms of relative time. Also, we've got, we're being told to send half a million dollars a year to Lehigh County for the crime center, and I have made a proposal by our municipalities, by the same municipalities who are talking about this grant money, and I've had a proposal where I have agreed to match any, any money that a municipality has, I'll put it in our budget, any money that a municipality wants to put toward the RIC, I will match it, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. We could use that money for that. So there are lots of different ways to use this money in ways that'll benefit the municipalities that are consistent with good government, because, you know, it's just my view that it's not good government to have an authority continue to grant money that is about to be abolished, one way or another, and of an authority appointed by previous executives, confirmed by previous councils, and it is just not, in my view, good government to continue down that path. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Any questions for Mr. McClure? See none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next thing on the old business, I have consideration of a county executive's veto of the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Compensation of the Elected Officials of the County of Northampton Resolution." This ordinance was adopted by county council at the meeting held March fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and vetoed by the county executive on March twenty-third, twenty eighteen. In order to override the veto, a two-thirds majority of county council members, six votes is necessary. A vote in favor of the veto override resolution is essentially a vote in favor of the ordinance as adopted, and a vote against the override resolution is essentially a vote against the ordinance. Mr. Heckman, would you like to introduce the resolution, please?
All right, I'll introduce it.
Pardon me?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I'll introduce the resolution.
You want it?
Oh, I didn't want to, oh, all right. I didn't know I was introducing it. All right.
Now therefore.
It's a new world, Peg, I told you.
Now therefore.
Now therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the county executive's veto of the ordinance titled, "An Ordinance Providing for Compensation of the Elected Officials on the County, of the County of Northampton," shall be overridden this fifth day of April, twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on this? Anybody wish to discuss this? Mr. Kuzic?
Just a couple of quick points. As part of the veto, the executive indicated that he couldn't discern why this should not be a ballot question, and I think I can answer that. The reason why is because the charter expressly gives council the authority to set the salaries of elected officials. So I don't think it should be a ballot question, because it is a power vested in us by the Home Rule Charter. And then, you know, later tonight, we're gonna approve a department head, we've approved department heads that start at ninety-three thousand dollars, some we have started at a hundred and three thousand. So what we're doing is we're trying to essentially raise someone who's gonna head a small accounting department from a salary of sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars. I do not believe that is unreasonable, and I think it will attract qualified candidates to run next year. So I'm going to be supporting the override. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say, Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, the last time I, I didn't vote for it, I just want to clarify, in case it's necessary. I, one of my concerns is this idea of qualifications. Right now, the qualifications for what is essentially a row office is, you're a resident of the county and you have a pulse. Now, if the day should ever come when we have qualifications written in, I think that's something we could talk about. And frankly, you know, I brought this up before, I think that, you know, sometimes we have to remember that the basic income, Lehigh Valley, I can say this now from great perspective, is getting increasingly expensive to live in. I mean, you know, sometimes we get out of touch with the number of folks out there that are, that are just getting by, so, you know, the idea that we must, and this came up when we discussed increasing the salaries for a few different groups. As far as the position itself, I do believe there's such a thing as public service. I'm not really looking to try and entice someone from leaving a corporate position or a private sector position with a nonprofit and feel, well, I have to compensate them at this amount to be lucky to get them. We all know, it's elections. It's about who's popular, it's about who can raise the money to run a campaign, so even if you get qual, if I get a great qualified person running against somebody with a pulse and a great name and somebody backing them, I'm gonna tell you, you know who's gonna win that election. So, so, I mean, I don't see the correlation necessarily. As far as the ballot goes, I tend to agree with Mr. Kuzic, wasn't there a discussion that we might put the council and the executive on a ballot? But I do think we should, that's something council should do, and I guess I'm okay with the current salary, and I think the good thing is, to those who disagree with me, is I'm just one person, and that's the beauty of the legislative branch. There's nine of us, and you can say, I don't agree with that guy, and we're voting somewhere else, and that's, you know, I respect, I respect council, that's why I love county council. I mean, you can always have one outlier who's being a pain on any given, on any given topic, but that's where I stand on this, and if people disagree with me, remember if you vote again.
Is there any other discussion on this ordinance? I personally, I'm gonna vote no, because our last meeting, we decided that we were gonna put all three of them on the ballot as a ballot question for the public to decide whether or not they wanted to have these salaries at this point, so I am voting no to not override the executive's veto, and I hope everybody else votes no also, because I think we should put it to the ballot and let the people decide, like we had talked about previously. Any other discussion?
Mr. Kraft, are you and I disagreeing on everything?
We seem to be.
We are.
Except who does the dishes.
That's right.
Because I have to.
I just am so opposed to putting things like this on the ballot, because it just seems as though you're shirking your responsibility as an elected official. You are here to do a job and to make reasonable, good decisions, and putting it on... You are here to do a job and to make reasonable, good decisions, and putting it on the ballot is just like, oh, let them decide. So, that's just, I'm going to be voting for this.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a comment. I just think that, you know, we're three months into our new election, and now we're voting for salaries already. There was years and years and years that this could have been done. And, you know, I think there's a lot more important things right now that we should be thinking about. So, that's where I'm at with it.
If I could just say, I'm open to changing my, I consider myself a lifelong student. It's a teachable moment, Mr. Kuzick. And I don't say that this is resolute, but as of today, I sort of feel like, Mr. McGee, I'm not prepared to go ahead today. But if I'm convinced otherwise, then I would recommend that we put both, I won't vote for a council race, but I would then recommend we do the executive and the controller at the same time as a council and either vote it up or vote it down. So, that's just where I'm at. As of today, I'm telling you where I'm at, but that doesn't mean I'm locked in cement.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Just a reminder, a no vote is no against the ordinance, a yes vote is for the ordinance.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes means to override.
Clarify a little more.
Yes overrides a veto.
A yes overrides, a no doesn't override it.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Ms. Lori, Fargo-Heffner?
No. All three of my names say no.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Mr. Rinsky?
No.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fail by vote of three to six.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for an amendment to the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article VII Finance. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Dietz and Mr. Kuzick at the April 15 meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Seeing no one, does anybody from, any questions or comments from members of council?
Well, the amendments to put forward.
This is your asking for the voters to vote for big capital projects?
Yeah, so, and contrary to what Mr. McCoy said, I think that the, at least what I understood from, we had conversations with solicitors, is entities like Lafayette, the bonds that they take out do not withhold the taxpayer to that debt. Therefore, they don't apply to this. The same also to any county project. So, it wouldn't go out to a bond if we needed to do something for Grayson, we needed to do something for the courthouse. This is strictly for private entities and so, and nonprofit. The perfect example is the Iron Pig. So, while it's been very successful for Lehigh County, there was a bond taken out on it, and had it been a failure, the taxpayers of Lehigh County would have been footing that bill. And so, while it's been very successful here in Allentown, the team that moved there left out of New York and left the stadium there that those taxpayers and feel that they were on the hook for. So, and it was the exact reason of Iron Pig's stadium coming in, which is why the state legislature allowed this to be an option that counties and municipalities can present this forward to make it go out to a vote before any debt is taken on that the taxpayers would be on the hook for. So, I do hope that you guys will support it. It does not, you know, in my opinion, and from what I speak to the solicitors, does not hang string any of the day-to-day operations that we do.
The commissioners had to vote for that, though, to give money to the stadium, didn't they?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's exactly it. So, you know, and I'm going to make an example here, and I'm not in any way going to say that it happened, but the perfect example would be when we talked about the Da Vinci Center coming in, you know. The day we were voting on that, we were back and forth, you know, pretty evenly split whether or not we were going to give them a million dollars over it. Well, in the very last second, you know, went to ten and it passed. It very easily could have been that council then would have said, this is such a good project, we think, you know, it takes too long to pay that off, we're going to take a thirty million dollar loan out for Da Vinci and give it to them. And this is what prevents that, you know, from just one executive and just five of the nine council members wine-dined or entertained and falling in love with it and putting the taxpayers on the hook for it. Now, again, I don't want to say, I'm not saying that that'd happen or anything, but that'd be an example of what this would prevent.
I was, actually, I was going to vote no, I'll be honest with you. Because, again, I think that's some of our responsibility. But in fairness, I guess I'd like to look at this more, in fairness to Mr. Dietz, because I respect everybody's opinion up here. I'm going to make a motion to table this. Maybe we can get it to the Finance Committee meeting.
I'll second it. I know. I know. So, a motion to table in a second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss?
You always want that one.
No old business. Okay, new business. An introduction of an ordinance entitled an ordinance by Northampton County Council concurring with the City of Easton and the Eastern Area School District in providing for the property tax exemption for certain deteriorated properties defined in the City of Easton Resolution Number 11-2018 pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended 72 PS 4722 and Act 42 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended and agreeing with the Amendment and Charter 531 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Easton Entitled Tax Abatement. I need somebody to introduce this.
I will.
Laurie? Ms. Fargo-Heffner?
Bob's district.
Oh, well, then, you want to go first?
Well, I need, and I need a sponsor after she introduces it. I need two sponsors, Laurie and Peg.
I need sponsors.
Okay, there's two sponsors, Laurie and Peg, and Laurie's going to introduce it.
Oh, that means I have to read.
It's going to be a long one. You don't want to read all seventeen pages, Laurie?
Do I have to do that right now?
No.
No. Oh, God, I'll save my voice.
Doesn't have to do that? Well, okay.
You don't have to read the information, that's for sure.
Okay. All right, Laurie, we're going to get you off the hook. I've introduced the ordinance by reading the whole thing I have here because it's quite lengthy and you would be here forever. So, I have a sponsor in a second. I'm going to indicate that the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the April 19, 2018 meeting. Okay?
Okay.
I took you off the hook. You're welcome. All right. Next one on the thing is introduction of an ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for the termination of the Northampton County Gaming Revenue and Economic Redevelopment Authority. Have Mr. Dietz introduce the ordinance?
Want me to just read the now, therefore?
Yeah, that would be fun.
All right. An ordinance providing the termination of the Northampton County Gaming Revenue and Economic Redevelopment Authority. Now, therefore, is hereby ordained and acted by Northampton County Council that, one, Northampton County Council requests the immediate termination of the authority; two, Northampton County Council requests the authority forward certificate expressly pursuant to 73 PS 384; three, Northampton County Council shall, upon the receipt and approval of the certificate from the authority, endorse such certificate as set forth in 73 PS 384 and file certificate with the Secretary of the Commonwealth for determination of the authority's existence. Former Northampton County Council requests the authority to certify that the authority has paid and discharged any and all bonds as issued and any and all claims and/or debts that have been settled, which may be outstanding against the authority pursuant to 73 PS 384. It is resolved by Northampton County Council that, upon the authority's terminating its existence in any and all existing funds and/or other property in possession of the authority, if any, shall be transferred to Northampton County. Five, Northampton County Council resolves that all appropriate officers of the county of Northampton shall be removed as appropriate to carry out the terms and conditions of this ordinance.
Thank you. I need a second sponsor for that. I'll co-sponsor it. Bill? Mr. McGee? Okay, the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the April 19, 2018 meeting. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of the Director of Corrections' appointment resolution. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Yes. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that James C. Custura shall be confirmed in his appointment as Director of Corrections at a pay grade of six, Step 1A, salary ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, effective April 5, 2018. And this was discussed last night, and it was moved for tonight's vote.
Thank you. Mr. Custura is here. We had, everybody was here. Are there any more questions for him before we go through with this? Seeing none, I think we vetted him very well last night. Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Fargo-Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. There you go. You want to say anything to us, or you feel like saying something? You have Mr. Heckman's dive questions written down?
I have to study those questions. Thank you for receiving me, County Council, County Executive. I just want to thank you again. Last night was some questions I have to dive into. Thank you very much for that, and I appreciate your confidence. So, thank you very much.
And thank you. Good luck. Good luck with everything. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of a resolution supporting House Bill 2137. Mr. Dietz, could you please introduce the resolution?
Sure. Whereas, House Bill Number 2137 was introduced by State Representative Marsha Hahn, Rosemary Brown, and Tina Pickett on March 12, 2018 to amend Section 527a of the Act of June 3, 1937, PL 1333, Number 320, known as the Pennsylvania Election Code, and whereas the amendments as indicated in the House Bill Number 2137 are bold and underlined. Section 527, public buildings to be used where possible, portable polling places, A, in selecting polling places, the County Board of Elections shall, wherever possible and practical, select schoolhouses, municipal buildings, or rooms, or other public buildings for that purpose. Any board or public education or school directors, or county or municipal authorities shall, upon request of the County Board, make arrangements for the use of the school property, or for the county or municipal property for polling places in selecting polling places. The County Board of Elections shall make any and effort, highly underlined, to avoid selecting schoolhouses as polling places and to select polling places that provide all electors and their persons who may be lawfully present within the polling place with an environment that is free from intimidation and violence. In the event no available public building is contemplated under this section and is situated within the boundaries of any election district, the County Board of Elections may, not less than twenty days prior to any election, designate as a polling place for such an election district any such public building situated in another election district within the same or immediate junction ward. Or, if there are no wards, then within the same borough or township as the case may be provided, such other building is located in an election district which is immediately adjacent to the boundary of the election district for which it is to be the polling place and is directly accessible, therefore, by public street or thoroughfare. Two or more polling places may be located in the same public building under this section. A polling place may be selected and designated hereunder less than twenty days prior to any election and the approval of a court of competent jurisdiction. It is now, therefore, resolved, and Northampton County Council supports House Bill 2137 and encourages the Pennsylvania House Representative to vote in support of it. Be further resolved if a suitable location and that other than a school could not be acquired, then it is recommended that the school either be closed or made an in-service day.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Anybody have anything?
Is there any other counties that are proposing resolutions such as this?
No.
Does anybody know?
No. I believe, I, no, there's no others.
That's my question.
Mr. Heckman? In fairness to the parents that were here, I, you had asked questions, but I wanted to wait until we had this. One, I saw the tape of the meeting, I wasn't comfortable with how it went down. I didn't think it was handled well. I've been in those type of meetings, as has Ms. Ferraro, with this august body and these people. They've had these issues. But I didn't, I didn't, I agree that it wasn't handled well. The other thing is, I want to stress this again, party chairs make the pick, and then they come to the executive and say, here's who we want. My only concern at that point, then, if the executive puts it forward, is I'm hoping that this person uses their best judgment, let be ruled by their better angels. I mean, I don't have a list of questions for just about, for somebody that's going on the election commission because, in a way, they've sort of been vetted by their party for whatever reason, or why ever they're being picked. I would suggest to citizens, whatever party you are on, that you could go to your party chair, it's easy to find out, brag about it enough, and say to them. That I want to be on the election. I want to be appointed. Would you please put me on? And if they're agreeing, they'll come to the county executive and put your name forward. As to this resolution, I'm going to support the resolution, but I will say, to me, it's almost like an elegant solution to a problem that should have never existed in the first place. I read with great interest Mr. Ryker's comments about the four thousand dollar, I don't know where he's getting that number from. I can't see, for the life of me, why a school that meets all ADA requirements, has great parking, is usually located well, can't be closed two days out of the year, considering at least the students, considering the in-services, considering snow days. And it's been done. So, I understand your concern, and that's why I'll support this, because you're parents, I was a parent, so I get it. But I really feel that this is a problem the school district or the individual administrators could have solved before it got to this point. And that's my position, before it ever even got to an election board. It could have been handled in-house and handled cleanly. So, yes, I'm going to support this, but I do think that I would urge parents everywhere to put pressure on the school officials because I question the numbers they throw out. We have teachers here, and I think they've some said similar things in terms of how these things can be resolved. So, I'm a little bit, I'm almost as miffed that your school officials as I am at how the meeting was conducted, that you were a member of, that you were subjected to. So, I will support it, but I'm, I don't know.
Are there, Mr.?
I have a question about just how it's worded.
Sure.
So, my understanding is that we're resolving to support a House bill, but then at the end, the last paragraph, be it further resolved if a suitable location, blah, 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 do we have the right to include that? Because we don't have any purview over the school district.
So, it's a resolution, so any of these things, the same as, you know, when we supported against the pipeline or like those, it's just pushing our wishes onto it. It honestly has no bite.
An affirmative suggestion, then?
There you go, yeah. And now, I think it does have some bite into the fact that, you know, we, you know, the county election board, you know, really serves for the county, so I think it does have some bite. And to the question, I think there's a school district in Monroe County that is doing that, which is where Rosemary Brown is from, so I think that they're actually in Stroudsburg there, are also taking on, supporting the same House bill.
Can I continue? I guess my concern, and it's not about agreeing or disagreeing, but, you know, the last time I heard about this, I made an offer for somebody to come and talk to me about what we do in Saucon, because we do this and we do this very effectively, and no one took me up on that offer. So, to say that we're not responsive, I think responsibility goes both ways, that we have emails, we have phone numbers, and that if we make ourselves available to help a solution, I guess I'm a little offended that people can come up here and just say, well, how dare you, and do you support this? It goes both ways, and civility goes both ways. The other thing that I'm concerned about is what's the school's responsibility in this? Because where have they made some choices in safety? What have they done in terms of gun safety laws within their school? You're talking about one day or two days a year? Well, what are you gonna do about the other hundred and seventy-eight days, where anybody can come into a school and shoot a kid?
Well, that's not true. Now, so, my kids go to Penargel, and so my daughter was in Plainfield, that school is locked down, you know, so when I go to visit, I gotta ring the bell to go in. It's different when it's election day. So, I realize that...
But not at Salkin. At Salkin, you go in one door, and that's why I said, there are solutions that other schools use, that those places are gated off, you can't go through, you don't walk through the building, there's one way in, there is one way out, you go in, you do your business, and you leave. So, I would encourage every school district to kind of take a look at that and section it off, so that the kids are safe, there's other ways to provide safety. And I'm not saying I'm not voting no, but the county can't do everything and can't solve every problem. So, I just would want them to respect that we can only go so far, and then school districts have to handle their own business. And that's all I'm saying.
Any other discussions? Well, I just want to say that, you know, this, this happened, I don't know, what is it, ten years ago, Mr. Spadoni? I believe this superintendent was an assistant superintendent at Easton, and wow, all of a sudden, it was unsafe to have elections at a school, at a publicly-owned building. Publicly-owned building, by the way, that everybody pays for, taxpayers pay for. So, it went all the way through the courts, and I think it ended up at the State Supreme Court. How hard, how did it go, Mr. Spadoni?
Justice Friedberg.
Justice Friedberg, rather, the opinion, went, I believe Senator Bascola had put a state bill in that schools should be used for, a public building should be used for this, this purpose. I, you know, I, this should be an in-service day, lo and behold, this guy becomes the superintendent of this school district, and all of a sudden, all the parents are upset that, you know, their kids are in danger when there's an election. Well, I beg to differ. In an election, you know, if you're gonna be going to a school and shooting somebody, you're looking for a soft target. You're not looking for a place that has a full parking lot with people doing their civic duty voting. I think the kids are much safer during an election than they are not, than the other way around. I won't support this. I won't support this, because it's two state representatives pandering for votes for an issue they see, and I don't believe it'll ever get out of the House or the Senate, because every school district, every, every voting commission in the state, this would put an undue burden on them. There are buildings, we own them, they're public buildings. In-service day's the easiest way to do it. Why this superintendent refuses to do it, it's a schedule, everybody knows when the election is, we have it out there every year, it's beyond me. So, I mean, I understand with the parents, I do have kids, I do have kids who go to school, you know, I went to school when there were elections, we used to go and look at the election booth to learn how to vote. We actually learned what elections were about. We learned, you know, what elections have consequences. Well, they took that all away, and now you don't want your kids to even see how elections are conducted or anything. I think, I think it's a teaching moment that's lost, and, you know, in-service day, if this, if this bill was introduced, that they asked for an in-service day during elections, and that the schools were closed statewide, I'd vote for it. I'd be a hundred percent supportive of it. But this way, I'm not supportive of it, I'm not gonna support two, two state reps that are pandering for votes, because it's a hot-button issue and it's their area. So, I'm voting no, and I wish everybody else would vote no to this, too. Are there any other discussions? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Vargo Heffner?
No.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Ms. Zirinsky?
No.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of five to four.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is number five, consideration of a resolution approving an agreement between Northampton County and Florio Perucci Steinhardt and Capelli LLC, Keefe Law Firm, and Cantor and Whitley LLC. I need somebody to introduce this. Mr. McGee?
It's a resolution, whereas on March fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the Northampton County Council reviewed a request to approve an agreement between the county of Northampton and Florio Perucci Steinhardt and Capella, Capelli, Capelli.
Capelli.
Apologize, Capelli. LLC, Keefe Law Firm, and Cantor and Whitley, representation on a contingency basis, the Northampton County, with respect to potential claims and other causes of action arising from the purchase, use, and abuse of opioids manufactured, sold, and/or distributed by the various companies sued as defendants in the complaint filed in Northampton County as docket number C-48-CV-2017-11557. And, whereas, Executive Order eighteen forty-two, appointing the law firm due to their unique knowledge, training, and experience with respect to their representation of clients in mass tort litigation, specifically municipal clients with accompanying retainer agreements, was issued by County Executive Lamont G. McClure on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas, the retainer agreement is being made pursuant to and authorized by Sections thirteen-ten and thirteen-point-zero-seven-B of the Northampton County Administrative Code, effective as such on July twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-eight, and amended June seventh, nineteen ninety, May seventh, nineteen ninety-two, and September fifth, nineteen ninety-six. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the selection of the law firm and retainer agreement between the county of Northampton and the law firm shall be approved this fifth day of April, two thousand and eighteen.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Mr. President, I kind of have a question, maybe for the administration. Am I correct in that there are three law firms now that would be involved in this litigation?
Well, I think that we have, obviously, the Perucci firm, and they're partnering with the Keen Law Firm and Cantor and Whitley.
So, is Florio Perucci not capable of conducting this litigation on their own?
Oh, they're very, they're very capable, and especially and have a great deal of experience in the mass tort context, and they'll be our local council, as you know, they're based here in Bethlehem, which is, you know, very important to me.
Yeah, but the other two were a surprise when I saw those, so I'm just wondering what will their role be in this litigation as it moves forward?
I was not, I was not, I think, as you know, involved in the interview process and the selection process, so I believe, I believe Assistant Solicitor Brian Taylor, who was, was involved in the, in the process, and he'll tell you about that process and why he concluded what he did, and why he and Mr. Corriere recommended to me to hire this firm, in addition to the fact that we went from thirty-three and a third down to twenty-five percent, so the taxpayers of Northampton County will actually be able to keep even more of their recovery than they would have otherwise. But Brian, if you could answer any questions right now.
Sure. We went through a five-week, I'm sorry, I'm Brian Taylor, Assistant County Solicitor. We went through basically a five or six-week process where we interviewed, we started off with five firms. At the first step, I did telephone interviews with the firms, just to judge their, their basic abilities as well as interests. During the second phase, we had them come in, they gave presentations, they provided us with reading material, as well as one firm did a slide presentation. At the third phase, it was more the follow-up phase, to the extent that they wanted to submit additional material, I took that and reviewed that. Mr. Corriere and I met probably five or six times. We put together a little graph or grid with seventeen different factors whereby we graded the various firms, and the Florio Perucci firm was the firm who we ultimately recommended. It's typical in this type of litigation that you will have a local firm, but you want to partner with a national firm that has experience in trying cases at the national level, as well as acting as liaison council with other firms, other jurisdictions. And so, if anything, each of the, well, the four of the five firms we interviewed all had national partners. That's typical in this type of litigation.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, you know, as you know, the State Attorney General is involved in litigation in this area as well, and I guess my question is, will any settlement that comes through the State Attorney General's office be subject to the contingency? In other words, would any potential settlement from the Attorney General that would have come to Northampton County, will these law firms be entitled or able to bill for recoveries that come through the State Attorney General's office?
Well, we should have received, I have not read it, I believe, we received it this afternoon, we worked out a kind of like a staggered agreement, to the extent that, if the litigation settles at a certain stage, the firm, in this case, the Perucci firm, will be entitled to their fees. To the extent that the Attorney General takes over the majority of litigation, their fee will be reduced by a certain percentage. So, it's structured so, you know, they're paid only for the work that they actually do, the recovery that they actually receive for us.
Okay.
So, what I have, and we just received this late this afternoon, and I printed out for everybody, so I have a copy for each of you of a letter that we received from Keefe Law Firm, along with their...
Just pass it over.
Along with the fee agreement, and it does talk about in there, we have no idea whether or not the AG's office will reach a settlement, if they do, our firm that we're hiring will be fighting for our fair share, but there's just no way to predict what's gonna happen with the AG.
We have to space this way entirely, in the state of litigation, to predict, you know, the extent of their role or involvement.
Any other questions? See you. Thank you. I guess call for the vote, Mr. McGee.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
For your record, date of want...
Oh, date of want, I'm sorry.
Okay, number six, consideration of a resolution amending number twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen.
Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that Resolution number twenty-five dash two thousand and eighteen shall be amended as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with strikeout have been deleted, and sections marked with bold underline have been added. Number twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of clerical technician three, pay grade of CS fifteen, one A, salary of sixteen thousand, three hundred, shall be eliminated in the solicitor's office effective February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician three, pay grade of CS fifteen, one A, salary of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, shall be created in a solicitor's office effective February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. So, the only change to this amendment is from a CR to a CS.
Correct.
Any discussion on this?
No.
Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other new businesses to be discussed for tonight? Seeing none. Council committee reports? None?
Yeah, one thing, I did attend the CCAP in Harrisburg, and I was at the workshop for the economic development on Sunday, and they did talk about, they are trying to, and I know this has been a long-term process, because I am new to council, but the Airbnb tax, hotel tax, they are trying to get a handle on that, so I was glad to hear that, actually, because it's a lot of money we're not getting, so.
Yeah, our controller's been on that, our controller's been on that for a while, our used-to-be controller's been on that for years.
Out of the woods, out of the weeds.
Sorry, I was trying to sneak out the back. To let you know, I have exchanged emails with various folks at Airbnb. Finding the right person to actually accept our information is trying. When you call their customer service number, they're very well-guarded with those numbers. I've used contacts in Lehigh County, I've been in contact with their tax people. I was supposed to hear from them this week with how to submit our information, because they need our resolution and our laws related to the hotel tax, so I have an information packet from revenue ready to go. I need to make sure I send it to the right place. So, that's what we are waiting on, so the communication has been opened up. I also tried to make a phone call with a great deal of frustration, that had my staff laughing, because I was trying to get somebody to connect me, and it just...
Mr. Barron?
It's a dead end sometimes.
Can our esteemed senators or our esteemed representatives help you in this, besides giving out grants, they could help this?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, these large companies, especially web-based companies, are very, very difficult to reach. Many of them work remotely. Airbnb is a San Francisco company, a large majority of their people work throughout the world. Some of their tax people are even in foreign countries doing this work for Airbnb. So, it's, it's, it's very trying.
Well, thank you, Mr. Barron. We'll schedule you for our next fire committee meeting, so you can go over the whole Airbnb, if there's any updates.
I will, yes.
No trips. I think you'd be a trip to San Fran.
Are there any other council committee reports?
Council liaison reports?
I attended the jail advisory board. Things over there are progressing well, you know, we have a new director, that's great. West Easton situation that you heard has been resolved, and I'm trying to think, there's no new initiatives, it's just, you know, more of the same, and I think they're in the process of reapplying for the grants for the support services that exist, so they're in good shape.
Thank you. Any other council liaison reports? Seeing none. Council clerk?
We will get our chairs tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Wow.
Just in time for the meeting.
I just want to say, I attended the, President Kraft, I attended the Easter egg hunt in the Sheriff's Department, did a fantastic job. That is really a neat, that's a neat...
They did recycle the eggs, yeah.
Thank you. Council solicitors report? Nothing at all. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?